Ready to record. All due to session, the planning commission work session meeting Wednesday, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty three at six oh two P M. And I get roll call please.
Commissioner Druck.
Here.
Commissioner Pickett.
Here.
Commissioner Hall.
Here.
Commissioner George.
Here.
Mister Kinsley is absent.
Wait for approval of agenda. First motion, my second. And the second, any discussion? Hearing none, opposed, favored, should I? Be approached. Okay, uh, minutes are also not on hand, but we'll take the whole business. To be discussing and review of the following four ordinance. Ordinance three oh nine and ordinance adopted text amendments to law development code. And text amendments to laws comprehensive plan code finding the role downtown master plan. Comprehensive plan was gone over last week. Uh, so we're gonna be mainly focusing on the rest of the ordinance adopted text amendments. Just for, just for clarification, you know, there's a couple of times last week. The only thing that we're addressing is the stuff in red. Anything that's in black, we're gonna have to bring back to a different meeting outside of this. To have those codes looked at and addressed. So just can we talk about this stuff in red today? That said, you wanna go ahead and take over?
Sure. Okay, so, uh, my name is Henry Hurley, uh, we'll be picking up.
Hold on, so you guys have some bill?
Yeah, I, I found a lot of stuff in black that, uh, really, uh, I think has to be dealt with before we can really go into any further. And I'll, I'll try to signify that, even with what was sent to me today about the lot size. First of all, what's this?
That is the ordinance that will change the zones for properties within the regulating plan. That, that, we'll, we'll get to that tonight.
And we're supposed to know who all these properties are?
Yep, they're literally every single property within the regulating plan. I went over it. Detail on every single property, well. We'll discuss it later, every property within the regulating plan is having its own change, and that is what that list contains is all those properties.
That, that's number three in our list first.
Yeah, I, I'm looking at it and I'm wondering.
Bill, is that, is that, uh, exhibit C that you have?
It is, uh, ordinance number three ten, uh, exhibit C, findings of fact. Did, did, is this the first time you got?
No, no, I actually got, we got this in January. I want to mark it on here, see in January at P D.
Yeah.
Okay, I must have missed that.
So that is kind of, I mean, it's related, but it's not the main purpose of the code update?
I, I, I wonder if we can talk a little bit about why we're actually doing this and who does it benefit?
Well.
And, and let me preface that by saying that I was a developer. And I think that we're doing this in case a developer comes to town and wants to develop in our city. That we have some pertinent information to give to them to understand what our city is all about and where our laws are and everything. And yet, we're dealing with a graph here that was developed from the two thousand s- uh, census. And we have not updated that. We have two censuses after that that would change these numbers probably. I don't know that for a fact. Uh, so before I think we, we, we should per- proceed any further, we need to make sure our stuff is current.
So.
Well, I, I.
Touch on that real quick. It's, it's not that we're discussing the codes, they're out of date. It's all we're looking at is stuff in the red. So next, next month, when we come back together. If we think there's an issue with all the rest of the code that is gonna affect this, you could, we can vote no. And, and not recommend the change until the other changes are made. Okay, all, all this meeting is strictly for is for us to make sure that we understand what the changes are in red that's going into the code. So it's, it's not, it's not necessarily about trying to get them to change it yet. That's what we have to wait for next meeting in, in public hearing to be able to discuss.
Okay, well, I would preface that also with, that is true, but that would be like a city initiative. The, the, what's being done with this update is driven by the master plan and funded by P L C E. So the purpose of this whole entire two-year-long project was to implement the downtown master plan.
Well, well, in order to do that, it has to be current.
Well, so, so we are, we are, so we are making the code.
I, I've ran this before. If we say it's okay, it's all right, it's done, then we never do it. And, uh, I think it's important that it is done. And it's really important for anybody that's looking to develop money in, in our little town.
Sure.
And, uh, you know, we can, we can say, okay, we're pretty far along. We can take it from here. Because a lot of the stuff that's been done is good work, I think. From what I see, I have questions, but I think it's good work. Uh, we are gonna get into these seven thousand versus fifty five hundred.
Well, I, I'm, I can just, I can describe the memo that was prepared. Um, but I don't think you should necessarily discuss.
Well, that's it. It's not, it's not for.
You should discuss that at, at a hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, I can save it.
Okay.
But, uh, I think I'm spinning my wheels.
Sure.
This is, this is really important, I think. And I've talked to a lot of people and, and developers, uh, not developers, but real estate people that are interested in this town. And, uh, they don't wanna be like Eugene or Springfield. They wanna be like, oh. And, uh, let's just delve into this quickly. Does anybody understand what the parameters are for a fifty five hundred foot lot? Let me, let me just tell you, a seventy by eighty foot lot is fifty six hundred. Uh, eighty by ninety lot is seventy two hundred. Eighty by eighty seven is sixty nine, sixty. And seventy by a hundred is a seven thousand foot lot. So in, in retrospect, you're actually changing the eighty feet to a hundred feet in the backyard. And a lot of people, this is quite interesting to them because they can have a little garden back there. They could build a shed to work on old cars back there or a whole lot of, of different things. And a developer coming to town, they would definitely want it to be fifty five hundred. Because then they can rip us and take our land and the house price is gonna stay the same, trust me.
Bill, I fully understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I, I do. I don't want you to think I don't. But we're getting into discussion to approve or disapprove the whole thing. It's all part of, it's all part of one, it's one package.
Yeah, and this is discussion. I, I'm not asking anybody to approve officially.
But it's what our work session is supposed to be for is to make sure we understood. Not that we had to agree with it, but just understood what the changes in red meant. So that we can't make an educated decision whether it's approved or disapproved in the end.
One of the changes here in red is fifty five.
I, I'm not saying.
Five hundred from seven thousand.
I, I guess what I'm saying is that's, we can just, next month, we can vote against that and say we won't accept this. But we just wanna make sure that we understand what the changes, not understand why the changes necessarily were the fifty five hundred or, or seven thousand. But make sure we understand the language, so that when we go to vote on it, we know what we're voting on.
Oh, I agree.
And, but the, the discussion of it has to be in that public hearing, otherwise we're violating meeting laws.
Well, this is a work session.
It's a work session for making sure we understand the code. That's what I said, not, not necessarily for debate of the code, just understanding of the code. The debate of it has to be in public hearing.
I don't, I don't understand that. If it's a work session, we can talk about what we're working on. I, I'd say we're not voting on anything.
No, it, but. I think, I think we all have the same understanding of the lot size. It's, but what we came together for is to make sure we understood what the changes were. So that we knew what we were voting on. Whether the change is fifty five hundred or we leave a seven thousand, that's not pertinent until the day of the hearing. What we just need to make sure is that we understand everything that's written, so that when we go to vote, we're not voting on something that we don't know what's there.
I realize that, but it's written here in red.
Yes.
Okay, so then it means, in my mind, it means it should be something we discuss.
But we can't change it.
I didn't, I didn't ask to have it changed.
But that's where it seems like we're going.
No, but, uh, there's a lot more stuff in here that we need to talk about other than the fifty five hundred.
I can also say this, I understand how much, where you're going. This is a work session, so we understand what's in red, what the changes are, so we can have our opinions of them. We've come back at the next council meeting where we're asked to vote on this, and we can say, I'm not willing to approve this because I don't agree with X, I don't agree with Y, I don't agree with C. And then we can have an even longer session in public session about it then, right?
Okay.
I, I understand that, but I also agree with where Bill's coming from. If we debate them now, talk them through a little bit. Where we all have a little bit better understanding of it, then our public session with all of the, the people who are gonna be here for what the access and pitch works aren't sitting here glaring at us as long.
No, I, and I understand that, but I think it's also important for them to hear the whole discussion. Because then they know, they hear everything also. It's not just five or six of us that are sitting here having a discussion. When they come in, they don't have the same understanding. They don't understand why we vote the way that we are. If they appear, that same discussion, the same arrangement stream. It is, it's open, but nobody's there.
What was it advertised as? What was this?
A work session, a work session.
So it's not advertised as a public hearing. It was not advertised the same.
Okay.
Yeah. So I, I just think it's important that we do, we do need to have these discussions about what it means. But I think it needs to be, that part of the discussion needs to be in our public hearing. I, I'm not telling you not to bring it up, just I think tonight, we've gotta focus on what's in the red, so we know what it is that's being proposed to us. And then have the bigger discussion during that public hearing.
Well, my only argument is, I've looked into every damn bit of this, we're not prepared yet to go to a session.
Then we, then we sit there and say, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna pass it or we're not gonna recommend it. If that's our decision, that's what we do during that public hearing.
Yeah, so Lon's right, so the, what the planning commission is asked to do for this project is recommend an action to the city council. It's, the, the city council can do whatever it wants. Disregard, regardless of what you say. So say the planning commission says, um, you know, I, I approve everything but for the fifty five hundred. That's merely a recommendation, city council can overrule. So that's just, that, that's how the process will unfold, just so you're aware going forward.
Lon, nice great question. Real quick, real quick, does this apply to the entire city or just the properties included in the downtown master?
That, that's a good question. That, so the fifty five hundred is for all R one and R three, so citywide. Yes.
Or is it advertised that it is not limited to just the downtown master? That's how I heard you say, that's the purpose of this.
So everybody, everybody that got their zone, that's getting their zone change in, within the regulating plan, got notice of the changes, and it was also posted and published in the newspaper of, of the changes.
It, it won't be the downtown portion of the development code.
Yeah.
Just in there, it'll be in the whole development code.
Okay, so where did we wanna start? Wanna start with the red? Or the memo?
We, we've got this reading list that Jake prepared. I think we need to go through this, uh, starting from the top.
Well, just so you're aware, so the memo that the P and T prepared for tonight, um, just kind of sets forth where the lot reduction discussion began, and it was a request from the city in two thousand nineteen to, um, review the minimum lot sizes for potential reduction, and that would be included in the whole scope of work for the downtown master plan. And what was, what's proposed is not, is not go against, you know, the comp plan policies, and that's what's kind of outlined here. I mean, all these policies that there's pulled right from your comp plan, uh, reduce lot sizes, smaller lots. Um, housing policies. Um, city shall, shall, shall support a wide range of housing types and in innovative residential design and planning concepts. Uh, what was first proposed for the change was initially six thousand feet. Uh, we took that to the code committee, some of which you may have been on. They said, well, why don't we go a little lower? Um, so we did. They proposed forty five hundred. So we presented that, but you probably were there. We got pushed back, so we raised it back up to fifty five hundred to where it is right now, and it's just proposed, that's not final. Um, and then, you know, there might be some apprehension about, you know, what's gonna happen if their lot sizes are reduced. Well, really nothing immediately within the developed areas of, of Lowell. Really, it's, it's really gonna apply to large undeveloped vacant pieces of land in Lowell. When someone does have the ability to do subdivision and make the lots a little smaller. So you won't see much change in the city itself. So with that, we're gonna pick up where we left off, uh, page fifty six. Um, so I don't know how Jake did it. Um, you guys have a preference, just, just talk about the reds.
Through everywhere, right up to section nine point three oh five.
Okay, so my notes say, pick up that page fifty six. Uh, which looks like, yeah, amendments. Uh, so the change for that section amendments is adding that subsection C.
Which, which one are you in now?
Uh, we are on page.
No, are you in the?
Oh, yeah, we're in this one.
Development.
Yep, yep, this is the only one that we'll be talking about tonight.
Is that this one?
Yes.
Okay. Page fifty six?
Uh, fifty seven, actually. Just go to the next page. That's where the change is.
Some of these pages are numbered and some are not.
No, every single one is in the bottom right.
Nine point two. This portion that Jacob pulled out, it's red only, is labeled numbered. This, where we were all starting our reviews.
This one here, this one here had numbers all the way through it.
All of this, there's not a number in it.
Yeah.
So it's, so all of this where we all started originally reviewing and putting our post-it notes and making, making our notes. No numbers, you gotta go by sections.
Division nine point two by three.
But the ones that you worked on last week are numbered in the bottom right.
Yeah, I worked, worked out of this.
These guys here.
This is what we have reviewed.
Which makes it a heck of a lot easier than trying to find a code in here.
Right, so we followed through in both of them. This time, I reviewed in S, so that I had a page number.
But. Anything, section nine point two by three.
Right.
And then sections, uh, C.
Yeah, so section C, uh, this just adds a, um, a provision that if someone is denied for an amendment, they cannot resubmit for the same amendment with important.
Hold on, guys, where are you?
Nine point two by three, the section.
So look at the one that has color, yep.
Okay.
Okay, the bottom right.
Yeah.
Page number is fifty seven.
Bottom right, page number fifty seven. I swear to God, there's not a number in any of these papers on either.
So the ones that I printed these last week, Jake brought them, they all.
Nine minute, is it though?
Nine point two by nine.
They all look the same.
Yeah, they do. Yep, so the one that has your question is one I prepared for you all. This is the one that we will, we worked.
Leave this back, we'll figure it, um, we had problems last reading, figured.
This is where I would call on, and it's, yeah, the one that has your question.
I'm maybe have the right pair of that.
Okay.
You know, I thought I said an extra one there.
All right, page fifty seven. Uh, it added a provision, and this is fairly, this is fairly standard for amendments type four procedures. If someone, you know, requests amendment to the text of the code, but it's denied, uh, they have to wait a year to reapply, and that just prevents them from keep reapplying and wasting the greatest time and money. Unless the city council finds that some circum- circumstance has changed that warrants a new application. This is purely administrative.
So we, we don't wanna look at anything that's been crossed out.
Um, I mean, not really. So crossed out stuff is stuff that is redundant and is being replaced with new, new red.
Okay, so the only paragraph is C.
Yeah, the only new change is that C, the underline is new, the cross out is proposed to be deleted. Um, so page fifty eight, uh, the only reds are just a removal of the reference to the boundary commission, which no longer exists. Um, add that an annexation is a type four land use process, which Jake went over with you guys last week. That is, so that would be an amendment, so say it's denied. That individual or property owner cannot resubmit for one year. Page fifty nine, uh, again, this is just, um, calling out that, uh, annexations are type four, and then the three down there. That when you do, when you do an annexation, you bring it into city limits, it also has to be zoned. So concurrently with annexation, you do a zone change. That's, that's how it always works. It's just making this more clear.
So, so just a, a question.
Mm-hmm.
We're looking at, uh, some public land that, uh, we're gonna do something with. Does this clause have something to do with that?
Uh, no, that, the parcel I believe that you're referring to is within the city limits, so it does not.
So Nelson's property that's just outside the city limits? If we were to bring what's out of city limits into city limits, this clause would affect that.
Oh, okay.
So it says, when you annex a property, it was county, you gotta make it city, so concurrent process.
Okay.
Uh, page sixty, it's, there's nothing of substance there. It's just updating the, the process. Uh, page sixty one, this is the same thing. It's just updating the Lowell plant commission, so it's plant commission, updating the process. Uh, there's nothing of substance here. And when there is, I will stop you and I will stop and discuss it. Sixty two is all being deleted because that is being replaced with the types, uh, land use process that Jake went over. Notification is, um, largely staying the same. The ones that are crossed out, those are included in the types process, so notice is not changing at all. Everybody gets the same notice as would, they would today.
And it looks like it, uh, stepped up the, uh, on page sixty six, the days.
Sixty six, yep, so that was actually that, the state law changed like ten years ago on that, so this one was out of date by quite a bit, so that's just been updated.
Okay.
Actually, it reduced the days from forty five to thirty five.
Forty five to thirty five, yeah.
Correct. Uh, so page sixty seven is section nine point three zero five. That entire thing is being deleted because all of this is replaced with the types applications. So there's a lot of deletion there. Uh, but the next thing of substance is on page seventy five. So this is where your, the city's new zones get implemented. If you see the ones in black are your already existing zones, but we are creating new zones, so this is where we're placing them. And they have a little abbreviations, D F twos, dot complex two, D F one, D R A, D R D. So beneath this section is where you're gonna find those new zones. Um, uh, continuing on to page, page seventy seven starts to R one. So that's an existing zone, there were some minor changes to that zone, so let's talk about that. Uh, this one, uh, permits accessory dwelling units are now permitted use. That's that four, uh, well, it's, it's same, eighty U's are allowed, but the same. Accessory buildings shall not be used for dwelling purposes, so like your garage.
Wh- where are you?
I'm on page seventy eight.
Okay.
So this adds eighty U's as a permitted use, a duplex, cottage clusters. Uh, this is where the, the seven thousand is, uh, proposed to be reduced to fifty five hundred. Uh, the minimum lot width reduced from sixty to thirty, and this is just adjusting from that seven thousand. Everything's getting whittled down just a little bit. Uh, the building lot coverage can go up to fifty percent to account for that A B U if there is one. Uh, the building height is still saying the same. Uh, oh, so good discussion ensued at the last hearing. About the garages being set back. We will, we will address that issue at the hearing. Uh, but it will be our recommendation to remove all that and just make it ten feet. No differentiation whatsoever.
Uh, on, uh, on seventy nine, number two, a minimum lot width is thirty feet?
Correct.
And, uh, how in the heck you gotta build something on that?
You can, I mean, the, the minimum, the only frontage standards in Lowell is, uh, I mean sixteen feet for access, so thirty is way above sixteen, that's all you need.
This is a lot width though.
Yeah.
Not the access.
Well, the access has to be sixteen feet wide, so you still have space on either side of that.
So I see, so this is.
So it's.
Figured lot like an eighth or something like that, where you're gonna driveway and go in and then the house is behind it?
You could.
It could have.
Is there a marker? Markers and pantry.
So width, I mean, it's literally.
What, thirty feet?
Okay.
So that's, that's the, uh, lot width. And the depth would be going back three feet.
And then you're.
And these are all minimums, it can of course be more.
Uh.
Uh, the rear yard, uh, still saying that ten feet, five feet for accessory buildings. Uh, page eighty. Uh, I also bottom page seventy nine goes into the R three standards, so your multifamily. Uh, so uses in that zone, uh, are subject to type one review process, which is your basic building permit, which is going Jeremy. Now, this is where you have the apartments, duplexes, triplexes, quadrplexes, a little higher density housing. You still can have a single family dwelling in R three. A D U's are permitted, single family attached and cottage cluster. Uh, removing the conditional uses of the multifamily, greater than fifteen units per acre, and the townhomes and condominiums. Here is proposed fifty five hundred, reduction down to seven thousand.
Henry, question for you. Under conditional uses, manufactured dwelling parks could. Uh, I was looking at the manufactured dwelling language that's also updated here. Uh, could a manufacturer, just a single one, be located on an R three lot?
Yeah, there's no, the state no longer. Uh, since a, a manufacturing home is no different than a summer home, and that's, that's the way, that's the state law now.
So it, it doesn't have to be a park, it could just be a, it's a single structure, yeah?
Uh, so along with the lot area reduced to fifty five hundred, the, uh, width is reduced to fifty. Uh, the max building coverage is, is increased to fifty to account for those A D U's if they do exist.
Say, uh, yeah, ten feet side beach and garages, car parks or other arc instructors, is that what?
Yeah, so that.
Eighty one?
Yeah, that's gonna, we're gonna get rid of that. That's, you're gonna see that.
Gone?
Yeah, it's gonna be gone, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be gone, yeah. Yeah, so that will be gone. And. Uh, eighty-two, okay, so eighty, okay, eighty-two. Planning Commission, this starts, if there was ever the purpose of the code, it is, starts on page eighty-two. This is the stuff that you guys really should be discussing. A lot of the other stuff was kinda periphery, but this is the main purpose of the entire project and the downtown master plan.
There's another one section that is.
Oh, page, oh. But yep, yep. So that just kinda sets out, you know, the next three sections all be with the same stuff. Okay, so. So kind of, so Bill mentioned, you know, it, it make, the developer comes a little, wanting to be easy to develop. Well, this is the purpose of these standard sheets. It whittles the development standards down to one sheet, so they can quickly and easily see what the standards are for them. So the DRA, it's a downtown residential attached, and that's your, that's your residential zone, that would be within the regulating plan. And it's the area that's kinda yellow. For your map, that's the area that this applies to, and it only applies to new construction. It's not gonna change anything that's already existed.
And back up.
Yep.
In subsection A three, A three, you start to see retail requirements. And for residential ground or for retail ground for offices and et cetera. Store press to have large clear windows to encourage transparency. What's the definition of that large clear window?
Uh, so that goes to the, if you look on page eighty-three, facade transparency, where it says seventy percent or seventy-five percent? Yeah, yeah, seventy-five percent, so.
We're gonna require developers to have seventy-five percent of their building to be glass?
To be, yeah, yeah, on the condition, and yes, glass, yeah, and that's, that's. That came, that's from the downtown master plan, from the vision for the, the downtown area, that's how.
We realize the cost implications of the structural and the glazing, and that's gonna do to developers down there? That part was already. I will not open that, sorry.
Okay.
That's gonna hiveosh any commercial developer coming in. Or, I, I just, I wanna point it out, just cost-wise, that seems to me like a dagger. Um, and so I just, I feel like I need to point it out, cause I really wanted to clarify, are we really gonna require seventy-five?
So seventy-five is a, the flex one, or is that, I don't know, seventy-five, yep.
Yeah.
That's what that means.
And then on eighty-two, again. Under B applicability, down on section three, these building standards will only start to apply in the applicable downtown plan area if a building is more than fifty percent demolished. Be that fire or earthquake or some damage, or a developer comes in to buy a piece that's already there. And decides to tear it down and restart, that's correct. So there's basically everything that's downtown right now, with the exception of maybe a couple of these properties, has already been developed. So this is truly only going to affect existing properties that already have buildings on it.
Yes, unless they redevelop, yeah.
Unless it's a redevelopment. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that everybody else read that and understood that as I am.
So Jerry's property, just apply to Jerry's property, um, the school properties, you have your own section in here.
Right.
Yeah, so the building standard sheets are designed to make it clear and simple for a developer to find out what the standards are. And that's the purpose of them, and to kinda illustrate, everything is labeled here, and one thing I noticed, and then I swear I put them on here, but the letters didn't show up on the notice below, so I can fix that.
I was actually an aspect, because I saw all these letters, you know, and I'm like, yeah, the legend's not here.
Yeah. So it probably needs to be moved over to the right, so then to pop up, I'm pretty sure that there, that is, the.
Can I ask a question on?
Yep.
Ground floor elevation?
For you on eighty-three.
And this is on eighty straight, okay? Uh, eighteen inches above the sidewalk?
Yep.
Why is that?
That is to create the, the look and, again, this all goes back to the, the master plan that was adopted. The vision and the look and feel for the downtown, this is at the, it was the, what do you call it? It was the design charade, that's what came out of that, so that was what was adopted, that was what we put in the plan.
But. So the planning commission already approved, made the recommendation to approve the downtown master plan?
Yep.
The city council already adopted the downtown master plan?
Correct. So, but, and this is kind of, this is where the, that plan gets implemented. So nowhere in the downtown master plan are you gonna see precisely eighteen inches, you're gonna see uh, houses shall have stairs that create a welcoming and inviting master. So that's.
But again, when we have an eighty-eight compliant, an allergic person, sorry, Bill.
That one, that would trump that, obviously.
You have to have three steps.
All right, or, I see it as a couple of steps, and, uh, and I'm wondering why. Uh, maybe eight, eight inches in a foyer or something, it doesn't, they've one is business and the other is residential.
It was a conceptual that came out of the downtown master plan group, the conceptual that they looked at was the houses stood up off the pavement ways.
Yep.
So that you didn't see them as a commercial building, you saw them as a house. So it was a conceptual plan, and the number eighteen just got thrown in.
It's a conceptual plan that people think it sounded good. And they didn't understand the ramifications of what they adopted.
It was based on the book.
Yep.
That, the look that they were looking for.
They didn't, they didn't look at the constructability, they didn't look at the usability, they said, thought it looked good, and they adopted it. Now they're asking us to adopt the code that will comply.
Yes, but you, I mean, if, if planning commission wants to get rid of the eighteen, that is not, that's not part of the master plan. The, the vision, the look and feel, the goals are part of.
So, uh, and you guys corrected, I think I read this as far as R three is concerned as well. If you're building a new house out there on the new subdivision, they want this, this stretch eighteen inches above the pavement?
No, I.
I didn't see that.
No, that's not.
I only saw this part for the downtown.
We don't, we don't necessarily care what outside of the downtown looks like, looks and feel.
Okay, and maybe I too, I think I see it here in the, in age eighty-five, but that's still the down, down.
Yes, still, like I said, when I, when we first got to these pages, this is the crux of the entire project. The purpose and goal of this whole thing is to implement the downtown master plan. These pages do that.
Do anything with DR at the beginning, that's your downtown residential?
Yeah.
But it also could be commercial.
Yes, then you're looking at the flex.
Yeah, then you're looking at the flex, so, well.
I'm looking at it right here.
No, you're right, so they do want that you have some uses, so downtown allows mixed uses, commercial, retail.
On every one of these.
Yeah, so you, it's essentially home models.
So the original developer comes in, I'm gonna put it downstairs. I'm gonna build a residence, but it could also be, I could build it, and I could sell it to Lloyd. Lloyd wants to come in and put a barista in there. And he has three steps. So he could do that, but then he also has to put in an eighty accessible rent, and with a lot size and lot coverage, there's not gonna be room for an accessible rent.
So I don't expect much change in the ERA long-term.
Um, ERA, I have another question. Um, in the notes, it references maximum building, I'm noteful. Maximum building height excludes basements and daylight basements.
Yeah, you probably won't see that in that zone.
I couldn't imagine anybody building a basement anywhere in Lowell with the water table on the clay.
That, that's, that's strictly that's. To the height section, it says like three floors or two floors, that means they could have two floors above ground. They could have a basement for daylight.
Maybe.
If we're building on a hill that's like this, we gotta make.
I'm twenty, ten percent agree with that one.
Yeah.
But this is the downtown plan, where it's all flat level.
It, it just left it in there, it's not saying that they have to have a basement, it's just saying that.
Yeah. Things are rare pace that they do.
If they're sorry, I'm gonna do.
Yeah.
Basically, that does not count as, so they technically could have a four-story house if it was two floors underground.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's two floors underground, exactly, that's where I was going, yes.
Okay, uh, there, just real quick, it's on that, there is also a little line there at the bottom, subject to fire chief approval. So anything above ground, below ground, it still has to be, we have to have approval for the fire chief.
Yeah, and that came out of, uh.
I only saw that on.
It's under height, building height, so.
It is only under the R.
Under, okay, you're right.
Under six.
I think about, yes, fire carton may or may not have the appropriate rigs, equipment to get that high up, so.
Or under. Or underground, that's my concern.
Yes. There you go.
I mean, I can't tell somebody that they can't have two stories underground, but I'm sitting here thinking. What's that gonna do to undermine the house next to it?
Right.
And that's why we have that in there, so that the fire department can, can have their seat on that.
And these would be subject to a type two review, so it would come to the city administrator, but they would solicit comment from affected governmental, governmental agencies, agencies of which the fire department is from, so.
So the only other thing I wanna point out again, we're gonna get this in, in, uh, in DRA and DRB. Um, and DF one, or wait a minute, do we have any DF one?
Yeah, DF one is kind of your.
No, I'm looking for the eighteen inch height requirement, I don't think we have that in DF one. Yes, we do, we do, I have it underlined right here, it's note seven.
So DF one, seven.
Under the notes on.
Oh, okay.
Inside under seven, so it's in all three of these for the.
Yeah, yeah, and if the eighteen inches is really a sticking point, it, it can be removed.
I just wanna point out the cost implication of making people cut and fill to build in these areas, for them to have to bring in eighteen inches more bill rather than, you know, when you build a standard house, you cut out eighteen inches underground, you pour your six inch footing in your two foot stem wall, and then you cover your footing with a minimum one foot frost protection. Now we're putting in a four foot stem wall, which more than doubles the cost of the foundation. And the cost of fill going back in, I just, again, I feel like we're putting huge, huge roadblocks for developers.
Sure, but I would also just kinda think about, what is that, at what expense to the downtown that Mo definitely wants to have that?
I'm not gonna argue that, I'm just, I'm just, with the cost implication of this, that it's gonna be to the, whoever may develop them. And that's a, that's a huge expense.
And eighty-seven is not numbered.
Uh, it's actually numbered, it's insignificant, it's.
Oh, it is, it's insignificance here.
It's insignificant, it's center.
It's nothing. Oh, eighty-seven, yeah, 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 yep.
So just real quick, just to recap on this, I, I hear what you're saying, Jason, and this is something that I think is brought up in the next.
Agreed.
Next month's hearing.
That's fine, I just, I'm also asking for a little bit of clarification now.
It, it, it was strictly just a number thrown in, based off of the vision that downtown master plan gave, that it said this is what we wanna see. So they had pictures on the screen, all these screens had staircases going up to the homes, I said, yes, we'd like that.
Staircases on, and then, then, then they looked conceptual, and then they were beautiful, and we said, that looks, ooh, look at the pretty picture, that is awesome, we can do that.
Exactly, and that's, that's what it came from, and that's why the number was put in there, was based off of that.
Sure.
So we did to make that choice next month on whether they agree with that. Uh, but, uh, you know, the important thing about that is that it did come out of that whole downtown group that's been a year going over what they wanted it to look like. So.
Okay, just putting, who were they?
Yeah, who were they?
We had several, I mean, Jerry was actually.
Jerry, you know who they are?
Jerry, Jimmy.
I was one of them.
Yeah.
And we had. There was no consideration of instruction costs, it is a, a recommendation from the consultant, El Paul. That.
Was the urban collaborator.
Yeah, the urban collaborator, it was based on a design and a look. And then we asked him to put code based on that, so they brought the code down to us.
Came back.
And we can say, yes, we agree with this or no.
That's a pretty honest mistake.
I can, I'm not throwing rocks, I just wanna point out the ramifications that I see. Um, so on.
So it's all your fault, Mike?
Yeah, it's all my fault.
On, um, nine, one, four, three, two, downtown flex use one. Um, I have a consideration that I wanna talk about in placement. So on the left-hand column replacement, um, we have a rear setback requirement, minimum of ten feet when abiding the residential zone. Also on this, we have a parking required consideration. For this downtown flex use one, it is a required parking, is it one per? Off-street parking, one per?
There's no.
Now you have to look deeper into the code to get the consideration, I had to flip back and forth.
There, our off-street park, off-street parking in the downtown zones is not, is exempt. It's, there's no minimum required, doesn't mean it can't be established, but there's no.
Okay, thank you, that clarified that, so what we are looking at right here, what this could be, is I'm seeing an apartment.
Yeah, so, yeah, this is mixed, what you're seeing here is.
It's a mixed use downtown, uh, down, first story, commercial, uh, upper story, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, probably units above, so that's eight cars that are gonna be parked on the street.
Or behind, or the, where it's seated.
With a ten-foot setback. You're gonna get one car back there, if you have, if you have.
It depends on your stance. In, in all honesty, this is Jerry's lot.
Okay.
And, and all, this is what this was all kind of brought in from, was Jerry Sager said, this is the building I wanna build, and we put this DF one kind of together based off of that.
Well, he actually thought it was more limited.
He does, yes.
He's probably the old lot that has the room.
Yeah, right. But he's also got the only section.
He, he's got the most vacant.
Besides what's across the street where the park, where the old park was, and the houses, and the other buildings that are there now, that if they were to be rebooted, they would have to meet those setbacks then, that zones is that small little section. Right there off to the side.
On, yeah, Jerry's lot.
And majority of it.
Well, and then East Main Street, and then the one where the, you guys didn't live.
Yeah. Yeah, we have to, yes, so, again, that.
So Jerry's development was not subject to, to this at all?
Yet.
Yet, his first phase was not.
Phase, one building.
Yeah, you get, you're.
Is not subject to the downtown master plan.
It was subject to the downtown master plan in a general sense, but not in specific.
But when he goes to do building two, three, four, five. They are subject to this. And also, if somebody is to purchase properties that are existing residences in the park, get split and rezoned across the street from Jerry to the south, would also be subject to this.
Yep, and, and every property that's within the regulated plan is subject to these standards. Should they ever redevelop? Or be developed, yeah, that will be developed, or. And so, no.
I do have a question also on this, looking at this map, I thought this one piece right here, Jerry, on the draft. I thought the city bought this piece. They did, it's, they did, they own that, okay.
Which one?
Right there, this, right there, uh, I thought you guys bought half of that.
We own the entire thing.
The whole lot, okay.
Correct, we're under contract with Jimmy Martini.
To purchase.
For him to purchase it.
Okay. While we're on here. There is one piece of property across the street on East Main, go, if you take the curstir to the left, go where you were, right above the end, on Main. On Main Street. That is owned by the school district. So that probably needs to get.
Let me check on that in the morning.
It's technically, yeah, I I don't know. I'm asking. I'm just pointing it out. Yeah, we we purchased it. Two years ago.
I'll try to.
All right, the one that you read here.
It's got a current building.
No, Bill, see where he's got the mouse up there right up, uh right above mains. It's what used to be Brothers Plumbing and then J K Electric. Uh the school district bought it a couple of years.
Okay, so that's part of the uh.
I can get it for you.
Well, I'll look in the morning. Okay. So if that's the case, then I I would propose, well. What we had done in the past. For a school owned property, we just kept it fully because. Why not? Yeah, so it's could be something that was missed, but yeah, we can.
So we have a little bit of a mess. We have to. Challenge there. We have to do rezonate, but we also have a rezoning soon for the city property. Where you guys are gonna partition off, right, Jim?
It has been partitioned, yeah.
This one?
Yes, sir.
Yes, this, this has, we did a property line adjustment. There is a new tax lot here.
And so I'm, I just was wondering if that was gonna reflect as accurately as we could.
Yeah, that one's gonna remain.
I didn't sabotage your sequence.
So what, uh let's talk about this, this one real quick. Um I, we're gonna, the city is gonna sell this one. So does the planning commission have any? Recommendations on what you want to see this?
Well, I I'll so. I'll add to that, but I would suggest you make your determination at the hearing.
Yes.
But one thing that kind of got lost at the first hearing on January fourth. We were looking for a direction on this, so we will bring it up again on February fifteen, but we will need your thoughts on. Whether or not that should be. It's a D R A or Flex One, but it should, it should not be public. It's not gonna be resold, so.
But it's definitely within the downtown plan, so it's gonna be one of the.
Six hundred percent in one of those, yeah.
Flex one or downtown residential.
Okay, um. So I kinda took over there.
So I think we're on eighty. We can talk, so we looked at Jake's notes. This plan is included in the discussion, so we can refer to it as, so page. Eighty seven?
Eighty six still.
Eighty six, um.
So again, with this, uh. Note eight. Um I should should say, yeah, I'm I'm referencing a note eight here. Pedestrian walkways must be provided to connect. The building primary entrance to the public.
Yeah, that, I mean, that facilitates people from the sidewalk or the street.
With a five foot, five foot planter. Five foot sidewalk. Five foot setback from the building. I believe that's what this said.
Well, I, the setback here, they really, it actually zero, so.
Okay, but they all, this also requires us to enter the pronoun building. From, from the, from the street, yeah. This also says ground floor levels with non-street facing residential units must be elevated eighteen inches minimum to upgrade. So how are we gonna get an ADA accessible sidewalk in five?
Well, so the resident in the flex one and. Talked to the design consultant about this one. Um so there should not be in the flex zone, it's, you know, it's meant for. Commercial uses and mixed uses, but if there's a residential use. It should be in the back because that's not the primary purpose of that zone. Primary purpose is that commercial use, so. And it should be offered.
Can we get some language that clarifies that in this?
Yeah, maybe it could be worded better because now it does, it is kind of awkward, non-street facing residential, yeah.
And so I'm looking at it, well, how would I? I, it doesn't make sense trying to build this in my head. How it would work.
And what you got, I think that comes back to the standard, we said that the B T is for residential. So if we. Decide that's not what we want.
Reated or required.
It would, yeah, but it still should be to the back. Yeah, their their primary entrance.
But yeah, and and then ten for the downtown. Flex use one is commercial upfront on floor.
Correct, hundred percent.
And if there is a residential use, it's upstairs or behind.
Correct.
I think that. Because to me, that's like, well, I have a house right here, then everybody can't, why can't they get to my business? Cause it's out back. Well, obviously, no reason to do that, but somebody could.
No, this is good, this is good feedback. Are we ready to move on page eighty seven? Yes, significant eighty seven. All right, so eighty seven. Uh there's not much difference here. Your C one zone. Is already existing. It's not gonna go away. It's just gonna remain as is.
Just, uh there are a lot of green stuff on here.
Jake mentioned this last time. The green is just um. A note for us to know that those likely have to be updated because we are shifting everything around. Which that has already been done.
Okay.
Uh the C two is being replaced with the flexes, so it's going away. And your current C two was only located in downtown.
And again, C one is not going away. It just is no C one identified.
Yes.
C one, it's commercial one.
You, the C one's always available, should it come up in the future.
But we don't have any property that.
You don't have.
Beats the requirements. Or than at this time.
All right. It's a placeholder, yeah. Should. Another part of the city develops. It's, you don't want to exclude it, so it's always there to be. Maybe, so. Okay, so eighty ninety one is in the same respect as the R ones, this is the D F two. And this is again in your downtown area.
Now I do have some concerns.
Ninety?
Which is. The downtown flex use two district D F two. Right?
Yes. Yep, so the pink is intended. Little more mixed use, not strictly commercial, no.
Right, agree. That would, and if you look at the areas that it's identified, it's pretty much residential now.
Yep, so that's, that's why you have your ground floor residential.
So on. That looks purple if they're lavender in me.
It does, yeah, it does on the screen.
But regardless. Again, this is intended more residential.
Right, mixed, I'd say mixed use, yeah.
And we're requiring seventy percent of the facade again. To be glass. On a residence.
So I will find out if it's actually glass, but facade transparency.
That's pretty clear to me.
Yeah.
And then forty percent of the facade on a second story needs to be. Transparent. The engineering costs on that, so we don't wanna move all the house there.
It's, it's windows, yeah.
If they do, they're crazy. And they have money to just throw around like the monopoly guy. Then there's another concern about parking here. Number of spaces, there's no minimum requirement, but C note eight. Off street parking must be located in the parking zone as. As seen on the regulating plan buildings. So this could be commercial and retail.
Yep.
Okay. Um so how many customers would that little business be able to facilitate?
Yes.
With no off street parking.
So again, off street parking is exempt. However, it does not mean that they not provide it for their business.
Okay, but city does not say. But they're not required to either, so we could have, we could have Nan's Bakery come in and fill a lot completely. And it can be the best bakery in the world. They can make the best pastries and the best breads and everything. And there could be fifteen people at all times coming to this shop.
Making me hungry.
And. And they're all parked on the street.
The, the concept behind the off street parking was that they wanted it behind the building, not in front of it. Not that, not that they weren't providing parking, but.
Ambiguous enough to me that I'm asking a question.
And and that's what I'm saying is, the concept behind it was because it's in a downtown area. The thought idea was to have all the businesses close to the sidewalk. And that they were gonna provide parking, off street parking, instead of being in the front of the building, it needs to be behind.
Yes, but this also allows for seventy percent block coverage. Okay, so seventy percent of your. Five thousand five hundred square foot lot. You have enough room for one parking spot.
It's that.
I could build this building to cover my hot seventy percent. And I could sell it to Lloyd and Lloyd opens his bakery. And now suddenly we have eighteen cars parked on the sidewalk or in front of it.
Right, it's not taking away, it's not taking away from parking on the street. It's just saying that you provide parking. On your property.
I get that.
It's in the back for the looks, so we didn't have the car lots out there. That's all it was about.
But now you're gonna block the street.
That was.
And that's.
Walkability, that can about with the walkability. You'll, they'll park their cars and walk down the sidewalks to the businesses like a small downtown area. That's what everybody in the downtown master plan. I'm just telling you. What came out of that development thing was, we want people to kind of park on the street. And walk, and walk to the commercial buildings.
Sure.
And go and walk to downtown area.
I would add, add to that, Mr. Chair, that. Another goal is to avoid the situation of having. A lot of. Asphalt in our limited space. Parking lots.
That are used.
That are used, especially when we're going for a certain look and feel.
Right.
With a limited amount of space.
I'm just concerned that if we allow this much. Flexible movement for a commercial building. That could have. Uh potential of. Well, look at Jimmy and Mindy, okay? How many parking stalls do they have at their store that are, that get filled? It's the busiest. Coming and going in Mole right now. Will it always be? I don't know. But if we allow for another retail style store like what Jimmy and Mindy have, business wise. And we don't put provisions in there to make sure that, hey, we can't just let them block the street. I just, I see a sentence up for. A, a, a bottleneck. Right?
Well, if they block the street, they're gonna get towed.
In a half an hour or forty five minutes.
We're gonna get towed regardless.
Yeah, so the thought is to park on the street anywhere in the downtown and then walk. Businesses, so it doesn't necessarily necessarily have to be in front of the commercial business side. You may be visiting.
Apparently, building interest must be located along the required pedestrian entry zone or oriented to the street. This again has an eighteen inch requirement. And we're building it right up to the sidewalk. And if it's. Gonna be a commercial style or. Business. If they're built right up to the sidewalk. There's no room for a eighty accessible ramp. That achieves this goal. Because the ramp is gonna have to be beside the property. And then. Down. Turn and come back to the front. So now you're talking about at least ten foot worth of ramp on the side of the building. To get it back up to the front. So that's gonna greatly reduce their ability to use their lot.
So we'll, we'll look at the eighteen again on this one.
I think anywhere we have eighteens, I think we've come across, anywhere that has an eighteen inch needs to be decided if we want it or not.
On this one, I understand, like the other one.
I get it. I, it's, it's a problem across all the board with all of them. It's the eighteen inches for heights. I think it's if. When we get to discussion, if we say we don't want the eighteen inches, that is removed straight in from everything.
But I'm just pointing out that if we do keep eighteen inch. We have problems meeting some of these other.
And I hear you. Again, it's one of those things I think needs to be also said in front of all the people during the hearing, so they understand why we're striking it. And and they don't hear us to say, get rid of the eighteen inches.
Okay, I'm just trying to point out that my concerns to, uh note ten, any ground level shop, store, uh. Shop front windows facing circulation networks must be kept visible and unshuttered at night.
As a security thing. It's, it's law enforcement type thing. That they can make sure nothing's going on on the inside. Some of you didn't see inside the building.
Much easier to throw a brick through.
It is.
But most shutters and most are just lines on the inside anyhow. I'm just pointing out that. It's an interesting code requirement. So.
Are these boilerplate coats? Is that where they all came from? They're looking at this design, this is what goes with it?
No, this is, this is intended to create the vision and the looking field from the master plan.
Reduction of that, reduction of. The marine. If it's, if it's all open, you can see in store, if you have a house across the street, you can see through with them and say, hey, somebody's in that building and they didn't be there. That's hoping to reduce the theme or anything like that.
Also, I'm looking at bills. Walking around town with your fam- family at night, you know. And you're walking by a business and it's just got shudders all over.
Like New York City?
Like New York's, yeah, it doesn't.
You can window shop, I think, if it's closing in the morning, yeah. It's also looking for the gym site.
Yeah, I I did note that it was on the. D F one two. I just was kind of shocked because this is kind of residential one. If it's a residence versus a business with that much glass. And.
So maybe we need to have something in there that differentiates between if it's commercial or residential.
Well.
It's on the bottom floor.
Uh so in the D where.
Like the D F two.
D F two, so ground floor. Uh is commercial and residential on the upper floor are the same.
Yeah, and it does say ground level shop front.
Yeah.
So refers to a store.
So then there's another, the last note that I have a question on. Residential uses. Entirely above the ground form must have a balcony of at least four feet. So we're gonna require whatever owner comes in to put in four foot minimum balcony for second floor, no matter what.
Whether they want, you're gonna come to this slide safety also from my view. Uh being a second floor. They have an escape route to get outside quickly. And then get a ladder to that balcony and get them down safely instead of jumping out of a two story window.
Okay, but every, you still have to have a window size adjustable, a big enough to get out on the second floor as well.
You have to have that anyway.
Right. So what I'm getting at is, we're gonna require them to build a balcony. In, in this whole zone. Anybody that builds a balcony in the pink. Or anybody that builds a two story. We don't make them build a two story here, do we?
Uh there's a minimum max or stories.
One four is the minimum. But if they build a two or a three, they have to have on each level a four foot balcony. That's added cost. If somebody has a four foot balcony, they never use.
Sure, but again, I would, at what expense to the downtown bowl?
I, I would say if you're trying to rent them, uh the renters would be happy.
Oh, yeah.
To put their barbecue out there so they could burn the building down from the outside to the inside.
That's exactly what I was thinking. That's what you're gonna see on these.
But they're not gonna have any other place to put. You're providing them a place to have anywhere to. Instead of not being able to have one at all. Cause they're not gonna go out and stand and park in the shelter. I, I, I get it.
Well, and the. The owner of the building, it's right that even easiest to delay. Uh, for a home.
And and even. Just as a thing to keep in mind with these is, these are also properties that. There's only one of these properties, I believe, that's. Even open for building on.
Uh Jerry has.
There's a couple of them.
On the west side, yeah, there's a couple that are.
One banquet right behind me. I guess there's a couple on there.
And one of them, I believe, is the green. And one of them, I believe, is the Grinch.
No, I'm talking, well, I'm talking about, yeah.
On the, on the east side.
So the range doesn't have to do anything.
Uh, right, but the reality is, is there's a couple other ones here that will come up sooner than us. On the east side of it, or on the, on the east side of Moss.
On the Grinch side?
Yeah, so.
There there, it's all housed in power.
Yeah, but I could see those buildings getting changed sooner than on.
Well, probably.
Hmm, one of them, well, I guess that one's across from, from the market, yeah.
I just, I'm just pointing out that one things that I couldn't see is we're. We're boxing ourselves into where it's not.
We're giving a bit of a visual that we wanna see. Which is what the downtown said that they wanted, the downtown.
That, well, I'm telling you right now, that downtown group said that looks pretty up there on the sky. Did not think about cost, and anybody that comes in here and looks at some of these things are gonna say. I'm gonna go build up there. I will never build down there because you guys made it to where I can't afford to build that. Guarantee of that.
I don't even not disagree with you, I'm just telling you what it came from, it's not that it. It it just had that vision, this is what they said, this is what we want our downtown to look like. It's not very different from you go over to sister, sister said, you have to use this kind of siding on the outside of your building.
I think y'all are ship selling the city short. This is a highly desirable community. Th- these properties that are ripe for development. These, I tell you, developers wanna come in here, they put in a a nice development, even with these stipulations, and it's gonna get sold out like that. And they wanna make money off of it, I guarantee you, people are gonna want to be here, so don't sell the city short.
I agree, Jerry.
Okay, I just worried about the construction costs and the restrictions of some of.
It's still gonna be profitable, even even, it's gonna be even more desirable. With these, um, with these improvements that they're gonna be required to make, I guarantee it.
Is there another city that's adopted similar downtown plans that we could compare what that roof looked like after the downtown plan was adopted? Um, I think we asked that.
Yeah, I I think the the one that comes to mind is is Culver.
Cause where?
Culver, all that comes to mind.
Which is when I'm reading through this, I get the feel that we're trying to create a meaningful.
I I mean, that's not the intent, but sure.
You're gonna put a name to it, another town, probably, but it's it's the visuals.
Yeah.
We see that they're being prosperous, that they did base good changes.
I mean.
So, yeah, we're saying, hey, I really think these changes can make a role.
Yeah, I mean, Jerry's, Jerry's own that you guys approved. Is gonna be excellent for this, that's gonna, Jerry's development is the cornerstone development for downtown, that's gonna spur the rest of downtown.
Yeah, and and we don't have a downtown right now, we have, we have a a once in a lifetime opportunity to do it right. So I I just, I don't think we should sell ourselves short, we got a lot going on here.
And and once again, I. I am for you to make, you bring this back, and be, thanks a lot for having the discussion. Because then, once again. It's, we want this to be in front of everybody, so they understand why it is that we're making decisions that we're making. All the discussion we have now, if we don't have this at that meeting, then you're gonna have community members saying, why'd you make that choice? Why did you make the choice you made? If they're not aware, discussions aren't happening.
Sure, maybe Florence, look, some has some of this similar stuff, Florence. Next year's summer.
In Old Town.
And and near there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Forty-five minutes.
Oh, my goodness, um, okay, so light. Uh. So finishing, so what we discussed was excellent special, that's, like I said, that is the crux of this entire project.
Or is core.
Yes, so, uh, page ninety-two, the light industrial zone is not changing whatsoever, um. There's some added, um, state laws relating to childcare centers.
One quick, yes. On the childcare centers. What, uh, what other restrictions do we have on childcare facilities? Jeremy, I think that's more of a question for you, I mean, I I I noted a couple of spots where we said childcare centers. Um. Is it, do we just defer to state regulation on childcare facility, facilities?
Say that again, just.
Uh, I've noticed a couple of spots where we refer to childcare centers. On other requirements for the childcare facilities, do we just refer to state regulation for those, like if somebody wanna bring out. Man's daycare, start a daycare home. Is that we just refer to, yeah, we don't allow that in this area. But you're gonna meet all the state guidelines for childcare, sorry, okay, I just wanted to confirm that would be the regulating by child care.
Yeah, there's no development.
That's correct, okay.
Now, if it were in the downtown, yeah, it would have a looking field. Uh, public lands, so so ninety-two, going to ninety-three.
On ninety, on ninety-three?
Ninety-three, yes.
Uh, just curiosity, there's a whole bunch of things about yard setbacks and everything here. Uh, have we thought about the employees that are gonna be working in the downtown, where they're gonna park their cars?
Yeah, um, and that's on the street behind the building, and again, the tenant or the owner of the building. They're gonna have to provide some sort of apartment for their employees, the city doesn't set a mandate or a minimum number, but that's on that. And it's, they're, they're able to use their creative methods with the site and the looking field to find part. But the city does not set an arbitrary number. So, yes.
So Jerry does his first core stone building.
Which Jerry did have to meet parking minimums.
He did, I was just gonna say that he had parking minimums that we had to.
In one point five.
Yeah.
For dwelling.
His next one will be regulated by this. And this, so his first apartment is filled. And he builds out his resi- or his commercial space below, cause let's be honest, his his apartments are gonna spread out the first month. Or the second month, it's not gonna take long for.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, but it's, this is down, his commercial space is gonna take a while.
Yeah.
Unless he already has tenants like that. He builds his second one. And, cause Jerry's owns the whole lot, he can use his whole lot for customer and. And, uh, employee and tenant space, but as he develops it with all private there. That then becomes his hardship.
Yeah, it it leaves it on the the developer to to have a parking space that meets their demands, their needs, their wants, their. Instead of the city setting that standard.
So then that's hard, and I wanna make sure, again, I'm gonna bring this up, cause maybe I didn't clarify myself well enough. It's Jerry's hardship on his property to provide parking for, let's be honest, if he does all five buildings, what is there roughly? Eight units per building with families?
No, maybe ten.
I think there were, his first was ten.
It was ten years for four.
So there's twenty, and I know that a couple of those other ones were smaller buildings that he had proposed. So I just guessed that it was an average of eight, so let's just say, argument, it's ten per floor, right? And he fills his lot, and he stays to our requirements. And we have, we have, um. What does he have, Pioneer and North Shore Drive?
He does not have North Shore Drive.
That's what I'm trying to point out.
But that's not because of us.
I know, it's county road.
It's a county road.
Okay.
Can, he'd access to it, but he has to go through another process.
Sure, so his parking starts blocking and people start filling in the city hall parking lot. When his tenants' buildings or his tenants' businesses don't have parking. Right? So it becomes a regulating problem for the city. Like Jeremy already said, well, then that car's gonna get towed, that becomes a regulating problem for the city to have to take care of.
That's like that in any, any city that has a downtown where people park on the street.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're not borrowing trouble, that creates a whole other regulating issue.
I would put it in a different way that. For a developer, we're gonna say, all right, developers, here's a general idea of what it needs to look like, we're not gonna micromanage you on X, Y, and Z. Like we currently do with our zoning code, other than that, it's up to you to figure out how to do the business. Uh, just out of curiosity, are we gonna do diagonal parking on Main Street?
Uh, no, it's, it's, it's parallel, there's, there's pullouts. Right?
If you did parallel, or I'm sorry, diagonal, you could get a lot more cars. On East Main Street?
Yeah, I don't know if the street went.
It's, it's not wide enough.
I think it's designed for turnout style. Um, parallel.
Yeah. What's, what's the width of that street?
I don't know, fifty or sixty feet.
I, Bill, I'm just guessing that, cause I walk across it every day.
Well, when it comes to the parking part of it, I guess it's.
Maybe, yeah, it could be scary, yeah, if you're waiting in the.
I I just don't want us, I just don't want us to make a great, a regulating problem for Jeremy and Max to have to deal with now. Will Jeremy and Max be here in twenty years when this is the problem? I don't know.
I'm honestly not worried about it.
Okay.
So seriously, I'm not worried about it, we got a towing contract, it's nothing for us to pick up the phone and. Get get car towed, I'm not concerned about it.
Okay.
And the other thing to keep in mind is these codes should be gone over. Yearly, by yearly, and at those times, if we say, hey, we start seeing a problem here.
We can amend it.
We can amend it, that's, that's what we really should have been doing all along. And so it didn't happen, so the thing about this is if we do, if we have concerns that may not really be today. And we start seeing those concerns, then we can make, then we can make a change, but if we don't. It great, things are moving forward the way we want it, and, you know, we worry for not.
Okay, I'm just trying to take this to her.
Yes, I think it's important to have, that's also, you're sharing your opinion on, just sharing my opinion, so we can work with everyone.
Uh, so, bottom of ninety-three, the public lands district, nothing is changing there. However, we are adding the public lands downtown, this is essentially the schools, uh, properties.
I'm gonna throw up a flag.
Our attempt is to leave this flexible and. Minimal as possible to allow for flexibility for the school's plans.
So my only concern. I really don't have a big problem in this, but I do have a concern that I wanna, that I wanna flag. Obviously, everybody knows that the school's goal is to develop and to grow. And I want it to look show, okay, I'm I'm vain. There's a way I want it to look, I want it to look clean, I want it to look new, it's gonna stay clean, it's gonna stay new as long as I'm here. I have a, a vision of where I see it going with a, you know, we put in this new bill that we just approved. With planning commission that's at the city now, and then my intent is to relocate our bus barn out of downtown. Where's one piece of property right now in mold that will facilitate that happening? And there's only one, that's big enough that's sold the right way that I could actually do buy, build, et cetera. Part of this standard right here is if that piece of property is no longer available. And I have to keep my bus barn there, but I have to do more than a fifty percent renovation and make that bus barn useful longevity for the school district. I'm concerned that I have a thirty-foot height requirement or a three-story height requirement that I would have to fulfill to rebuild my bus barn where it currently is. So again, this only applies if I do more than fifty percent change to a building. But if I have to remodel my bus barn on the current school grounds. Then there's requirements in here that make me have to build that.
It's not necessarily a floor. It's minimum of two floors, but see, it says it says ten foot per floor.
Yes, so, okay, so.
Beats a three-story degree.
By the way, we're actually technically all rooms mixed.
But it's part of the same building.
Right now. And the intent is to build a gym that would be obviously well higher. But if if that property just goes away up here, and I can't relocate my bus barn up there. Then we're gonna be coming back to the planning commission and saying, guys, I don't have a choice, I have to go this direction now. And I do need to replace my aging facility, and this is the only property I have that's available to do it. So, and if that happened, and I do not want that to happen, but if that happened. Would we make an amendment to this downtown?
I'm not sure I under, what what is, what's the problem that you see?
Well, if I, if I had to rebuild my building where it currently is, I don't need a thirty-foot tall bus barn.
But you don't need to have a, the, you don't need to have a thirty-foot.
Didn't I read that one?
It it's a maximum of three stories.
Okay.
At a minimum of two stories, so a twenty-foot, which is twenty-foot tall building would be your.
And that, and and I wouldn't go that high because I would need to put a dam like in the gap.
Right, yeah, it's it's got a minimum number of floors, it's two floors, and then a maximum number of floors is three. And and the overall.
And and guys, trust me, this is not my intent, my intent is to be an exonerator and continue that plan. And I'm good with the rest of it, I just.
When we made these, we, we, we already know your plans, we already know phase two.
Yeah.
Everything here accommodates that, that's why we put max height forty-five feet, cause your gym is gonna be. Well, it's gonna be higher than thirty feet, but it's gonna be less than forty-five, I already saw the plans. Uh, if you do have issues meeting that second story, you can convert that to ten feet toward twenty feet. And that's, yeah, number six.
So the yard setbacks that I'm looking at here, that's all the downtown plan? In black, number three on page ninety-three.
Oh, we're going back, we're on page ninety-six now.
I know, but we're talking about maximum building height of forty-five on on page ninety-three, right?
We're ninety-six, Bill.
Okay.
The 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 chart that Henry and I were referring to, that I misread, and I did, I misread this one, I'm sorry.
The the stuff on ninety-three is already existing, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's light industrial, that's section's not being touched.
It's not my intent, it's just worst case scenario for some reason.
Yeah, I I think, I think to take away, take away from this, is we're kind of working with this, well, the city. Is both the work with the school, but we ask that. You meet that second story.
Yeah. And sorry, I have a problem, but three stories for, I was like, whoa, wait a minute.
And and all these things have the ability to come back to the planning commission as a variance.
Okay.
If they can show hardship why they have a part-time needing that goal, they can always bring it to it.
Well, again, I might have been. Two years, three years into it, and it's. Ten thirty, you're gonna block at nine thirty in that.
Uh, and so page one oh six.
So you go from ninety-six to one oh six, or ten pages missing?
Uh, there's no red between.
Yeah, yeah, I think Jake, the same printing costs, and to make it easier, he, stuff that was not touched at all, he just removed. And we printed all the other pages that had red.
I do have an, I do have one question before we skip to ninety, uh, one oh six.
Yes.
On page ninety-seven, it's, you don't have. It is land development overlay, it's nine point four six zero. Uh, and that's actually, it's nine point four six one, does this? Is this? Speaking to the downtown plan? This is speaking to the rest of people. Okay, it, yeah, cause I'm like, it it talks.
Highly unlikely, I mean, I'm not saying it can never happen, highly unlikely a PUD would ever occur, PUDs, you do a lot of space.
Right, well, even if it's a minimum of five acres, and I'm like, there isn't a lot that's five acres within the city.
So, yeah, let's say, yeah, it is, it wouldn't apply to that.
Okay.
You need a lot of space, yeah. Maybe the city might have in the future.
I was scratching my head thinking, how is this even possible?
PUDs are are really nice developments that they can ever realize. Uh, so one oh six. Um, that, the development standards matrix, no one knows what that is or where, no. It doesn't exist, so it's.
Never.
Essentially, yeah, yeah, essentially, you could say it's actually you're building standard sheets now, that's kind of the purpose of that. Um, the, okay, so we're shifting gears, so, you know, Jake and I and the whole PMT team have been kind of reiterating. There's like certain aspects of the code. The bulk of the code and the main purpose is those building standard sheets and the downtown plan, included in that. Are general housekeeping things that Jeremy and the previous administrator and myself and others in the town. That had just said, hey, this needs to be changed, this is inaccurate, or we've had issues with this, let's just update it. So now we're moving into that section, this stuff is pretty administrative and pretty routine and general housekeeping, that's how you could classify it. Uh so that's what page one oh seven is.
And I hate to be this guy, I'm gonna. This is a housekeeping item?
Okay, we're running.
You're on one oh seven. Uh. Right? Lot size exceptions?
Exceptions.
This is a housekeeping. Same with. Article nine.
I think the development standard matrix is a housekeeping thing, it's irrelevant, we've never had it.
We're taking time to vet some of these housekeeping things. And like Bill said. Why didn't we get some of the other data updated as a housekeeping item?
Well, I mean.
It wasn't brought to their attention.
The data that Bill referred to is the cop plan and that's. An entire different project in itself that the city would have to take out, it's outside of the scope of this entire project, that's just the fact.
The funding source would come.
No, not even if we ask them today, would it?
Okay, that answers my question.
I'm not sure I heard all that.
So the cop the cop plan that you referred to at the beginning of the meeting. Is not in the scope of this project. The only amendments to the cop plan are what was actually required because we're changing things here to have to be reflected in the cop plan. We're not changing any of the tables, the data, all that's staying the same. If the city wants to pursue that project, that's a separate independent project that they would have to apply for. Or seek funding or pay themselves.
And so what I asked Bill was, we're taking an opportunity to do some housekeeping in red where they're striking things out and making minor changes. Their housekeeping items within. This document, within the developmental code. And I said, well. Why didn't we take the same opportunity to do some of those amendments with the regulating plan? And the answer was. The funding source that's paying for all this work wouldn't cover that.
Is that right?
Well. So there are minor changes to the cop plan, but those are the changes that are.
That had to be made to make to make it consistent.
Yes, so. The cop plan, I would not consider a housekeeping, I would consider that a two-year overhaul overhaul project that would cost like seventy grand. And that's outside of this. Jeremy may have ambitions in the future, the city may have ambitions to seek funding or pay for themselves. A new cop, a revision, just repeal the whole thing and and start.
So why do I have all this paperwork? If we're, are we voting on all of this or?
We're voting on the. Let's, yes, let's finish this and then I can briefly tell you about the ordinances that is what you're voting on. Okay, so. Is there anything, is there anything with the rest of this that is anything more than? Let me look. Going over kind of. Uh, okay, so, okay, yeah, so one eleven. What's what what's reflected here is the implementation of the downtown zones. Uh the no minimum house parking for the flex.
I did have some questions here.
But everything else is existing. It just looks better than what was in your current code.
So a lot of.
So, yes.
Refers to hotels, motels, hospitals, nursing homes. We have. We have office buildings, professional office buildings, medical, dental, banking. Uh auditoriums, theaters, halls, stadiums. Skating rinks, dance halls.
Yeah, you probably never see it, but.
Uh so I mean, this is just future proof, but again, is this downtown plan?
So the only parts that apply to the downtown would be. The D R A flex one, flex two, D R D.
So the. Just the top. Couple down to down to. Downtown residential detached, so the first five lines.
Correct.
Basically, the rest of it is future grouping for. An anomaly.
Yes.
Yeah.
It did, yeah. And so we're just putting some things in to say, if this were ever.
Well, we're not, so this is already here. It's it's red because it was easier and easier to read. I crossed it out.
Go down to the next page.
In a table format, yeah, look.
It's the same thing, he's just putting it in a table.
Because it's really hard to read that. It looks.
Just a a statement. Up here it says dwelling, two families, two blocks or more, family, one, one parking. Uh one parking space per dwelling unit. And we're in Lowell. And we're away from. Where people work. And it's been my experience that at least have to have two cars for each. Dwelling unit.
Better than that can that can happen. There's no reason you can't have two. Okay, you just have to have this one.
One's on the street, one's on. So again, uh what it says basically is one, one parking spot off the street. So one's gonna be on the street, one's gonna be on. Or one of them.
So I'm looking for the next update to talk about.
No, what this is saying is that no matter what, whether they have two cars or not, you have, they have to provide at least. Yes.
Talking about the flood stuff.
Flood is. Page one six two. One six and two. Is just clarifying around home occupation. Right, it's a. Section nine point six three five is where you start. If you're having, so this is. It's not changing much, what it's saying is. You have, if you want to have home occupation outside of the downtown, you have to go through the type group process.
One six two?
Yeah, one six two and then section nine point six three five, through a process.
So we passed over a bunch here.
Yeah, we did, we did, yeah.
So we, yeah, we went through the entire flood hazard area where. With um.
Pick up.
Jacob last week.
Um the next beef that we should talk about are the ADUs and. If you get ADUs, there's some basic standards for them. Um ADUs are a great way to provide more housing for people on a lot. I think Jake showed the pictures to be attached, detached or within the main dwelling. Uh cottage clusters. It'd be great if Lowell could test cottage cluster development, these things could look really nice, so there's some basic standards for those.
And again, accessory dwelling unit, they use. Are coming from state level, so we are adopting them in front of the state.
No, Lowell, so. Yes and yes and no, most like. State mandates. You have to be a ten thousand population goals below that, but ADUs is a great way to provide. Few more dwelling units, infill, more housing units. And and we've already, the city's already been getting.
Requests.
There's probably already a few that were.
And and because they're non-permitted, they're not COVID, they're not. Up to COVID. Probably technically, actually, but. Residential. We can't do it.
But yeah. ADUs, excellent. If your aging mother or father wanna live with you, can have a. Little place in the backyard. Cottage cluster is, it's not a. Precise picture of what it would look like, what's representation on page one sixty-eight, what it could look like. Think of like. Many, many house, like smaller houses grouped together. You know, uh common space.
On the cottages, so do we have anybody interested in the city or its clusters? Any inquiries?
No inquiries yet. But it it's a. That's a good option to have.
Yeah.
So the the maximum square footage for cottage clusters are twelve hundred square feet. And so. Somebody could develop property. And start with a single. And as long as they don't exceed fifty percent of the lot. Square footage, they could put. Six or seven on one property, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the density is no more than ten. Uh but no fewer than four, so that's your sweet spot.
That's what, there is a minimum. No fewer than four. That's. A large lot.
I mean.
Well, if you're twelve hundred square feet times four.
Well, so at least fifty percent. And each cluster shall have a gross floor unit less than twelve hundred, so they can be buried and so.
So let's just say that the average size is a thousand square feet, yeah. So that's four thousand square feet of houses. So now you're an eight thousand square foot lot. Now, I, I. Well, according to fifty percent of. Fifty percent. Oh, fifty percent, again, I probably was reading this way too late at night. Cause I read that at least fifty percent of the cottages. Or I was reading it as fifty percent of the lot. For coverage. Um maximum lot coverage maximum. All structures in cottage development shall not exceed sixty percent.
So you have forty-six percent for pathways.
Okay, but when I'm again, I'm saying. If you average cluster is a thousand square feet.
Yeah, so it maybe is a larger lot, but what are you getting out of that larger lot? You're getting at least four dwellings.
Okay, I'm just going back to the five thousand five hundred square foot lot. You will not be able to build a cottage cluster on that.
Yeah, so the developer probably wouldn't.
So if you get a developer comes in and buys and develops a cul-de-sac or a section of street. They can decide to develop these lots. I can develop some of the five thousand five hundred. And right across the street, I can develop some under eight thousand square feet, so that I can put a cottage cluster.
Absolutely, yes.
And this gives them an avenue to make a larger lot, hey?
Absolutely, yes, yeah. That these, I I haven't been been one myself, but. They look pretty neat. And that continues on. Page one sixty-nine. Uh honestly, page one seventy, this, this is like. State state law language that has to be updated for. The only thing we didn't really move was the additional stuff from community assets. Which was the. Part of cottage cluster.
Uh.
Parking design.
And there is a question in the cottage clusters that I had, the guys, I was looking at this at probably eleven thirty. There was a note on here about carports. And it was in the cottage, it was in the cottage cluster section.
I remember talking about that.
And it said something about.
On two ends.
So you you can have a garage or a carport, but you don't have to. If you want to have one, you may.
And it can't be bigger than four hundred square feet.
Correct.
Yep.
Individual, individual detached garage.
Individual detached garage is four hundred square feet, individual attached. A carport is not considered a garage.
Correct, correct.
Carports not considered a garage.
That's barely a two-car garage. Thirty by thirty is nine hundred square feet. Which would be a three-car plus.
Yeah, that a carport, it doesn't have to meet either one of those requirements.
The the point I was, the only point I was trying to make. I can build a carport the size of this fire hall. Off the side of my cottage cluster, as long as I don't. As long as I don't go over by. Sixty percent lot coverage.
It probably wouldn't sell and be a good catch.
I know, I'm just saying, but we're limiting in four hundred square foot detached. Detached garage just look a lot nicer.
Yeah, i- i- if someone's gonna do a cottage cluster, it's gonna be nice. Yeah, it is.
We went through all the yellow.
Yeah.
To be. So Jeremy, this is the section, sorry, I'm I'm. Uh one seventy. This was the section I was referencing, family, child, care, home standards. These O R Ss, which are where you state that.
Oh, that would be.
That's what I was asking, that's what, if somebody, you know, man wanted to start. A childcare center, this is our, this is it.
Yeah, yeah, essentially, and get your building permits.
And so we went through manufactured loans with Jacob.
So the next section is one eighty-five, which. One eighty-five is your definition, so these are. Generally housekeeping, ADUs, adding that definition. Uh a carport is defined. Childcare center, that one's driven by the state law. Development is defined as what constitutes development. The downtown district is defined and that's references. The. Yep. The downtown regulating plan. Drainage ways, that that was kind of a housekeeping to make sure everybody knows what constitutes drainage, a drainage way. Um it's one at the top, so.
Can we go back to that one real quick?
Yeah.
Which could. Means a constructed or natural channel or depression that may at any time collect and convey water, drainage and stream through function together. Or rip off, I want to call it a drainage, maybe permanently or temporarily. And in addition, anywhere of course, assuming the city's most recent local wetlands. In the rain, actually, we consider a drainage. The only reason I'm questioning this right now and wanting, this is just the definition of it, I wanna. Find this city ordinance, Jeremy, cause I'm gonna have an issue. Uh lawyers probably gonna sue me over a drainage right here in the next month or two. I'm probably gonna need it, I think I talked to Max about it. Earlier this week.
This is a conversation we need to have elsewhere, elsewhere.
Uh yeah, so facade transparency, um yeah, so. Drainage is in splash, so I'll I'll find out about that.
Yeah, I I I looked that up, we're back here. Last night.
Lot consolidation happens a lot in Lowell, just making that uh defined. Required built-to-line is important, that comes with the the building standard sheets, that's a new term for defining that.
And that's also in the downtown area.
Yeah, all in the downtown area. Same families attached.
How do we determine what's in the downtown area and what's not, this part of this code, I know, I know. But in this code, because some of this does not pertain to the downtown, some of it pertains to the rest of the community.
So that's sort of the outset. Kind of preamble.
Right, but that lot consolidation right there pertains to downtown.
Lot consolidation, no, lot consolidation would apply anywhere in the city.
You brought that up last week, right? We talked about that.
Yeah.
It was just a terminology change. Okay, but it's that is citywide.
Yeah.
Citywide, not just downtown.
Yeah, yeah, in.
Again, downtown. There's different rules and regulations in the flex and that's just the. The. The building. Uh D F one, D F two, D R A, D R D.
Yep. Yeah, so lot consolidation is more, it's sort of, it's housekeeping. Um. Yeah, it would apply to anybody that also consolidated a lot, even in the downtown, which could be beneficial. Get a larger lot, so. Guys, I think that's it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, it sounds like the only points of contention for further. Decision at your February fifteen meeting?
We didn't have a February fifty.
We didn't have it February fifty.
February first was the original date.
I'll play it right, so February first, you are, planning commission is pre convening to hear Dollar General, but February fifteen, I is pre convening for this.
But so it sounds like the only points of contention for a decision on February fifteen are minimum lot sizes. The eighteen inch. Standard. So for steps.
Yeah, that's the eighteen, right?
The eighteen inches and the facade transparency.
I'm just making it out of these two.
I, Jeremy, I, I actually have every intention of walking all the way through this again and making a list of things that I have concerns with that we. And I think all of us should do this. Truthfully, I think we should all go all the way through. And even though we've discussed these things, if we have, if these were things that we wanted to discuss and say, hey, this is what's up. To credit what Lon was saying, I think we should all come here with a list rather than us trying to flip back and forth to remember. We all have that list, I think that. Public meeting will go a lot smoother if we can discuss these things, this is what we were discussing, remember, we talked about this on. Nine point five one, uh, this was my concern. You know, so the public does hear it.
I think what Jeremy's kinda asking is. If the city were to go back and say, hey, you know what, we just wanna take this out of there and not even have it be part of it. Uh, if he says, let's just remove the eighteen inches, so that's removed and. They have that loss. The garage setbacks was another. That. Then our discussion could be more around the rest of stuff that we have concerns about, sure, and not have to spend an hour going over. Fifty five hundred square foot lot, if it's gonna be a bone of contention, I think, but, correct me if I'm wrong, that's kind of what I got through the question is. You're, you're looking to look into those and make a decision whether it's worth it or not.
I, so I'll, allow me, um. I would probably let us look into this, well, the minimum lot size, I think we've done all we can do, but the, the steps and the facade transparency. What we'll do is we'll look into it and we'll. Then back to you on the fifteen, cause. The planning commission needs to make the decision on, cause we shouldn't be fifteen, so. We're gonna, when we come back on the fifteenth about the garages. We're gonna say, yes, we looked at it, we agree with Mia Nelson, our recommendation is to strike all that and just keep it twenty. So we have seven seventy pieces.
I guess.
So to, Jason brings up a good idea too. Is February fifteenth is decision day. So you can vote to, to recommend these changes. Except for A, B, C, D.
Yeah, and that would be clear in your motion and your discussion. So when you guys discuss a night of a topic. Okay. Uh, we need to vote about, be vote on this one at the end, yea or nay, or be keeping this or removing it. And majority will win, so there not need to be agreement amongst.
Well. I, I would go along with that, but that's a, that should be a meeting, and then when we protect all that. Then we should vote on the finished product.
That's the discussion of the planning commission.
That could be another one of our options.
Yes, okay, just keep in mind, the, the contract with D L C D, the bonus project will end. Uh, March fifteenth.
Yeah.
Here's the bill, February fifteenth. That February fifteenth is decision day. So if there needs to be more meetings be- between now and then. You know, we have next Wednesday. You know, that's an opportunity, we can set up more meetings, but February fifteen is it.
But those meetings can't be about. Whatever you like, some here don't like something. I mean. That has to be done in front of the public. That, that's our, it's part of our decision making process.
Uh, they have to be the public.
They have to be the public here, it's our decision making process.
So, so I, I gotta find a lot of questions. If, if we end up all hamstrung of not making a decision, can the city council, irrespective of us? Bring yea or nay, step in and just make their own decision.
I think, I think they might be able to do, yeah.
So if we, if we couldn't come to a decision. City council, irrespective of what we had to say about it, recommendation, yea or nay, could just step in and say, we're gonna adopt it without the record.
I think the city council has that discretion and that.
Not saying that, that's why.
I think it's in the code. Well, with, we would amend that the city council extends further, and the city council said we don't accept recommendations, we're gonna do this.
Right, well, they can say, we're running up against this, and if it's a funding, you're gonna, we're gonna make a decision at this meeting. And as the elected officials. And the decision makers in the community could just say, we're gonna do it or we're not gonna do it. Because, okay. Not that I want to get there.
No, but it's.
I just wanna know what the whole process will be in terms of us and them.
We could, we could recommend changes, make them choose not to accept those changes. They can, we can say, we don't wanna, we don't agree to this, they can say, well, we do agree, so yes, they, they got. Right to accept the recommendation.
So do we wanna talk in the, in the next two minutes or so on, what is actually gonna be voted on?
Yeah.
You have that. Explain exactly what it is that we're voting on.
So, so it's ordinance, oh, oh, sorry, you must talk about these, oh, okay, yeah, so. I can give you a brief overview at a high level, so. Uh, three oh nine. Okay, so this is. That ordinance is adopting the amendments to this and the comp plan. The tax amendments.
So if they want to amend something in here as presented by staff, what words do they, what are the magic words?
Oh, well, um, which one are you voting on? I, I have some of that, Jeremy. I will. Well, it, it would be, I mean, along the lines of the planning commission recommends to adopt the code amendments, but for. Section three sub A. And, and cite them out like that. Yeah. Or you could generally describe it, as long as it's clear in the record as to what's not being recommended or ruled. We can look at that. Yeah, so that's what that one does, um.
Then we'll go to where we're standing.
Three oh nine, it is basically this.
Three, three nine is basic, is this.
It, yeah, is this.
It's changing the zone.
In order for a city legally amend its development code, it has to be via ordinance and by the city council, so that's what that is.
Orness three ten is identifying the properties to be rezoned.
So similarly, yes. Legally to change. Uh, zoning of a property, it has to be done via ordinance, and that does. Uh, it also does. It adopts, so since you changed the zone, obviously have a new zoning map. Also need to adopt that. Also, we made revisions to this since it was.
Thank you, my first adopted in fourteen nineteen in the comp plan.
So this is kind of just a C Y A. Cover, or cover your butt, whatever. Hey, this is the new regulating plan.
Yeah.
This is the functional operational effective plan. So that's what that does.
That's taken, three oh nine is the comp plan. Well.
Yeah, three nine's, three nine is the most important one, the, the others just happen to fall in line because you did this. Is, what else, there's one more, it may be.
No, he said.
It was just the two.
Three oh nine, read that.
Oh. It was in my mind, okay. Yeah.
Do any questions about the game plan for February fifteen?
If in fact, uh. We were not happy with it and don't vote for it. Can you carry on from here to finish this up?
It will go straight to city council. And they, they can choose to. Yeah, do with it, what, whatever they see fit.
I think the city council in, is, in that instance, I think the city council would say, okay, planning commission failed to make a recommendation, so we will take it better ourselves, that's what they say.
But, yes, I think they'll see. I'm sure that there will be some question, why did they fail to make their decision? And that discussion goes to them, and then once again, they have the right to make a decision based on. Whatever one they choose.
Anything we recommend to them, right? They are the ultimate deciders on, on just about.
On things that we've spoken there.
Speaking for myself, I feel like we could make a recommendation with a few exceptions.
I, I think. I think February fifteen is decision day for the final. I just wanted to know what would happen. If we.
If we didn't.
Yeah, yeah, not saying we're gonna get to the point where we don't, cause I think that. You know, ju- even being here this one day with you guys, like. There's a lot of stuff to delve back into, we've got again, but. You know, some things make sense, some things don't, whatever. And they'll come out. You know. Fifteen, we're having that discussion in front of the public.
I, I think they'll.
I think.
Of all of us, yeah, I knew it was. That's it.
Yeah.
Items.
Yeah.
I know I need to.
Yep, so the code, we, we backs. But the city made sure if the, has the discretion, if the planning commission fails to make a decision. He can kick it to the city council. That's what he intends to do, so. February fifteen needs to be your decision, I, I, recommendation, sign of the decision, so recommendation.
And I don't feel that we're gonna default and make Jeremy do it. Yeah, we have enough knowledge now and understand, I think we can. That we can make a recommendation with a couple of.
So, the planning commission is very important, the city council is looking to the planning commission to give them. Finished product, like, hey, guys, we vetted this, here's what we think. We like it, but for these things.
Since I've been here, there hasn't, I don't remember any recommendation ever going to city council that they didn't. Follow what we recommend. Yeah, so it's, it really is to us, and they, they listen to us, they expect us to be the ones digging through this, so they have counted.
I agree, I appreciate.
Why they would want to, but that's why we're here, right?
That's why.
The amount of time, the amount of time that you have put into this, why everybody. This, this, I love paperwork, it's, that's my boss. It's my favorite thing in the world.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like we're ready to record it.
We didn't have anything else further on the agenda. And, and I think we're walking out of here with a better understanding of at least what is in there, so we can make. Have discussion on February fifteen. Moving forward.
I agree.
Okay, then I applaud the planning commissions. I mean, you guys are all serious about the case of this, six, eight o'clock at night on a Wednesday, taking your own time away from the family, this is what Low has to do, you guys did a great job.
Yes, you are, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Three of my kids have money.
Yeah.